All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Board of Public Works. And please rise as you're able for the pulsing colors.
Ready, cut. Shoulder, up. Order, up. Ready, cut. Freeze and, up.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second and discussion.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, the approval of long-term stormwater maintenance agreement with Verizon, the presentation by Max Murchell. Max?
Thank you. Good evening. This item is for approval of a long-term stormwater maintenance agreement for the Verizon development located on West Washington Street. This is a typical agreement that we enter into with property owners when we grant them a stormwater management permit. Basically, it is to make sure that the improvements that are on the property to manage the stormwater will continue to function as intended in the future. So it's a typical agreement that we sign with the property owner, and we would recommend approval by council tonight.
Thanks, Max. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second and discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, approval of grant of privilege agreements, carriage walks on Eighth Avenue. Max?
Thank you again. During the reconstruction of Eighth Avenue, both phases, the phase from last year and the phase from this year, we had to remove multiple carriage walks that were existing there. And for the property owners who want to reinstall them, they're obtaining a grant of privilege from the city. So this is three of those properties, two that are in the phase that was done last year, and one in the phase that's being done this year. The addresses are listed in the memo. And basically, it's, again, a typical type of agreement that we enter into with property owners who want to install private improvements within the road right away. And we would recommend the board and council approve those three agreements.
Thanks, Max. Anyone have questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, approval of grant of privilege agreements, carriage walks on Eighth Avenue. Max?
Thank you again. During the reconstruction of Eighth Avenue, both phases, the phase from last year and the phase from this year, we had to remove multiple carriage walks that were existing there. And for the property owners who want to reinstall them, they're obtaining a grant of privilege from the city. So this is three of those properties, two that are in the phase that was done last year, and one in the phase that's being done this year. The addresses are listed in the memo. And basically, it's, again, a typical type of agreement that we enter into with property owners who want to install private improvements within the road right away. And we would recommend the board and council approve those three agreements.
Thanks, Max. Anyone have questions?
Yeah, I have one question. I noticed that there were, there was three-foot and five-foot right-of-way, or carriage walks. Is there any standard, or is it simply what they ask for?
We don't really have a standard. We try to keep it at five feet maximum, because this is the width of our standard sidewalk. But if the property owners want to go down to four feet, three feet, depending on their needs, then we accommodate that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, approval of grant of privilege agreements, carriage walks on Eighth Avenue. Max?
Thank you again. During the reconstruction of Eighth Avenue, both phases, the phase from last year and the phase from this year, we had to remove multiple carriage walks that were existing there. And for the property owners who want to reinstall them, they're obtaining a grant of privilege from the city. So this is three of those properties, two that are in the phase that was done last year, and one in the phase that's being done this year. The addresses are listed in the memo. And basically, it's, again, a typical type of agreement that we enter into with property owners who want to install private improvements within the road right away. And we would recommend the board and council approve those three agreements.
Thanks, Max. Anyone have questions?
Yeah, I have one question. I noticed that there were, there was three-foot and five-foot right-of-way, or carriage walks. Is there any standard, or is it simply what they ask for?
We don't really have a standard. We try to keep it at five feet maximum, because this is the width of our standard sidewalk. But if the property owners want to go down to four feet, three feet, depending on their needs, then we accommodate that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, award contract nineteen dash zero seven, crack and joint sealing of pavements at various locations.
Thank you again. So this is a request or a recommendation to award this contract for crack and joint sealing of pavement at various locations in the streets of West Bend. This is part of our pavement maintenance program. This type of maintenance is applied to roads that are in better conditions on the pavement condition rating scale. And the goal is to prevent water infiltration, to preserve that higher rating longer. So you have maps of the locations that we recommend. And we received four bids for the contracts, and they are listed in your memo. Based on the bids received, we would be able to do all four alternates that we had planned. And therefore, we would recommend that the board and council award contract nineteen oh seven in the amount of forty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars to American Pavement Solutions at the unit prices specified in their bid for the work that they will actually perform.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. There's a fairly big delta between the price of the first three bidders who could have turned in almost the same piece of paper and American Pavement Solutions. You make a statement that they're capable of performing the work. Have they done work for the city before, or some other like-sized municipality?
Yes, they did. Actually, they won the contract last year. They did the crack sealing for us last year. Prior to last year, they had not performed work in the city. So before we awarded the contract last year, we did a reference check with various communities. And we decided to award the contract with, to them, based on those reference checks. So based on that, based on the work that they did last year, we feel comfortable that we're going to get a good product from them. As far as the big delta, that is something that we have seen over the years, even before this contractor came into town. We used to have a different contractor who was consistently bidding at a lower price, sometimes half the price of the second bidder. So it's been a trend that we've seen throughout multiple years, I would dare to say decades, in the city of West Bend.
Okay. Thank you, Max.
Any other questions for Max?
I'll make a motion to approve American Pavement Solutions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, reject bids for contract nineteen dash zero eight, pulverize and overlay Paradise Drive from Indiana Avenue to River Road.
Thank you again. Unfortunately, this is a recommendation to reject the bids that we received for this contract to pulverize and overlay Paradise Drive. This contract was originally only for this work, but as we were bidding it, the need came up to do the same type of work on Ariel Drive near the airport. So we issued an addendum to include that work into the same contract. And so we were, we're looking at two bids, actually, one for Paradise Drive and one for Ariel Drive. And we received two bids for this contract on Friday, July twenty-sixth. And when we opened them, both bids were much higher than the estimates that we had for either contract. And for that reason, we would recommend that the city rejects the bid. And we would propose to carry forward the funds to rebid the projects earlier next year, hopefully to get more bidders and more attractive prices on those projects.
Thanks, Max. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to reject the bid, and hopefully, next year, we'll be able to get a better price out of them.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and any discussion?
Yeah, just one quick question, Max. How many contractors did you send this out to?
We have a list, I believe, of half a dozen. But in addition, this is published as an official notice in the newspaper, and that is something that we post also on our website. So it's, it's hard to say how many we actually reach. I don't have the list of plan holders with me, but we follow them on, because when they pull a plan, they sign up on our, on our website, and then we, we know how many we have. I don't have the number with me right now, but I can certainly email it to you later tonight.
Do you have a level of confidence that we'll get different contenders for this one?
I believe so. I think there was a little bit of the timing, talking to the contractors. I believe that bidding the contracts earlier in the year, we should get much lower prices for this. Because our cost estimate was based on those contracts that we've seen earlier in the year, those unit prices. And so that's why I believe that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, appoint committee members for selection of candidate firms to design the project Eighteenth Avenue Reconstruction from Volk Drive to Paradise Drive.
Thank you again. So this is for the Eighteenth Avenue Reconstruction between Volk Drive and Paradise Drive. As you may know, in February, we have the city and the state entered in the state municipal agreement for the design of Eighteenth Avenue. And this is the time where we need to select consultants to do this design. So we're following DOT procedure on this, and we posted the requests for qualifications according to their procedure. And now, when we do receive the, the responses from the candidates, which will be August twentieth, we will need to have a committee to, to rate or rank the candidates. And so that's why I come to council, to basically appoint the committee. Last time, when we did this, there was one alderman that was part of the committee, and it was the alderman of the district where the project was going to happen. But there's no specific rule. We can appoint counsel, not me, counsel, can appoint whoever they want. The rule is to have a minimum of three appointee. I know that there's another member of the, of the board who's interested as well, and we can work with two members of the board or the council and put three other people around with them and appoint this committee, I mean, work with this committee for the selection of the consultant.
Thanks, Max. Any discussion?
I'd be willing to serve as a member of the committee.
And I think, Mike, you're interested, right?
I would as well, yeah. If, if needed.
So which, whose district, Andrew? Is this your district?
Yeah.
Okay. And we're actually making the appointment tonight, right?
I would like to. I mean, you don't have to if you want to wait. You can really wait.
It might be best a table, so we can all think about how many people, too many people might be.
Sure.
Too much.
And, and, and that's fine, but the next meeting is August nineteenth. It won't be a meeting of the board, but it would be a meeting of the council. So if you want to make the decision at council level at that time, it's fine. We'll receive the, the candidates' applications or responses the following day. So that would be fine to do that.
Hypothetically, not to jump into your meeting here, Andrew. For example, if you and Doug weren't official members of the committee, you would certainly be there in an advisory capacity, right?
That is perfectly fine, yes.
If three gentlemen want to be on, on the committee, we can vote on those three, and you can adjust the other members.
Yes, absolutely. If, if you decide to vote on the three tonight, then I'll figure out two other people, and then we'll be set to go.
All right. Any other questions?
Nope. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. And just to be clear for Stephanie, that was Alderman Allen, Alderman Shivali, and Commissioner Johnson.
Correct.
Got it. Item number seven, permission to advertise contract nineteen dash one zero, building demolition at two thousand one hundred Northwestern Avenue. Max?
Thank you again. So this is a, an issue that the city has been dealing with for quite some time. According to my research, it started in March of two thousand. And basically, the city has been involved in various procedures to try to address several safety issues created by the bad condition of this building at twenty-one hundred Northwestern There was a raise order that was issued by the city on September fifteen, twenty fifteen. And recently, a couple weeks ago, the Washington County Circuit Court determined that the raise order is valid and enforceable. So at this point, we would like to proceed with the demolition of the building. There are some environmental issues with this property as well, and the city will have to address only the ones that pertain strictly to the building demolition. The other environmental issues will stay with the property. And so we have provided an estimated schedule in this memo if we would obtain permission to bid tonight on what the process would be until the building is taken down. So we're asking for permission to advertise. Advertisement should happen early September, according to the schedule.
Thanks, Max. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
And with no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
Thanks, Andrew. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board from Monday, August fifth, twenty nineteen, to order. And allow everybody to do their chair shuffle. Item number one is approval of the minutes of the regular board, the regular meeting of the licensing board from July fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? There are none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number two is a temporary Class B beer license for Wisconsin Fraternal Order of Police, Kettle Marine Lodge Number Ten Incorporated, for the Wisconsin Riders Police Unity Tour Annual Pig Roast, Saturday, September seventh, twenty nineteen, from nine a.m. through ten p.m., being held at Regner Park Entertainment Area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item four, approval of operators' licenses, and the list was in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item five is operator's license for Mallory Wolf, and we have a presentation tonight by Chief of Police, Ken Moeller. Good evening, chief.
Good evening. The police department recommends denial of this license based upon a felony conviction that Ms. Wolf had in August of twenty twelve in Wamatoosa, Wisconsin. She was convicted of obtaining controlled substance by fraud, and for that felony conviction, drug-related, license-related, we recommend denial of her license.
Is Ms. Wolf here tonight? And if so, feel free to come up to the mic. No? I don't entertain a motion on the item or discussion.
Motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number six is an original reserve Class B combination liquor license for Buzzdum Ladies LLC Hot Shots at eighteen oh four Barton Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number six is an original reserve Class B combination liquor license for Buzzdum Ladies LLC Hot Shots at eighteen oh four Barton Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number six is an original reserve Class B combination liquor license for the Steel, the Steel Shoe Fund for the Milwaukee Rally, being held on August twenty-ninth through September second, twenty nineteen, from eight a.m. through nine p.m. each day at West Bend Harley-Davidson, located at twenty-nine ten West Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item four, approval of operators' licenses, and the list was in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item five is operator's license for Mallory Wolf, and we have a presentation tonight by Chief of Police, Ken Moeller. Good evening, chief.
Good evening. The police department recommends denial of this license based upon a felony conviction that Ms. Wolf had in August of twenty twelve in Wamatoosa, Wisconsin. She was convicted of obtaining controlled substance by fraud, and for that felony conviction, drug-related, license-related, we recommend denial of her license.
Is Ms. Wolf here tonight? And if so, feel free to come up to the mic. No? I don't entertain a motion on the item or discussion.
Motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And item number six is an original reserve Class B combination liquor license for Buzzdum Ladies LLC Hot Shots at eighteen oh four Barton Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And being no further business before the licensing board, I adjourn. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council from Monday, August fifth, twenty-nine, to, two thousand nineteen, to order. Recognize that all eight aldermen are here this evening. Under presentations is item number one, oath of office for Police Officer Tamara Cheek, and a presentation by the chief.
Raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Tamara Cheek.
Tamara Cheek.
Having been appointed as police officer.
Having been appointed as police officer.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Well, I can, Tamara's a bad John. I'll just briefly introduce her. She completed her associate degree in criminal justice at Milwaukee Area Technical School. She obtained a bachelor's in criminal justice from American Military University. This last May, she completed police recruit school, seven-hundred-twenty-hour state-required school at Milwaukee Area Technical School. She's also been a member of the Army Reserve the last three and a half years, and she's had some distinguished, as we found in her background, honors there, so welcome her. She's got a great background. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Congratulations. Congratulations, Officer Cheek. Moving on to item number two is recognize American Legion Award winners. I believe we have a presentation tonight by our, our fire chief. Who are you?
Good evening. It's always nice when we get to come before you to recognize some accomplishments of our staff. We'd like to thank the American Legion for hosting this award. Annually, the local post always gets information from us regarding some candidates for firefighter of the year, EMT of the year, and police officer of the year. This year, Deputy Chief Chuck Beistel won the local county, or local fire chief of the year, or, sorry, not quite yet. Hang on. He won the local firefighter of the year. EMT paramedic, Mark Renzel, won the paramedic of the year, and Officer Brandon Kniprath won the police officer of the year. The nice thing about this is that it's kind of a staggered thing. Once he, once everybody wins the local, they go on to the county. Deputy Chief Beistel won the county firefighter of the year. He then went to the second district level and won that. And then from the second district, he went to the state level, and he is technically called the state firefighter of the year for American Legion. So that's a pretty big award, and, and we congratulate him on it. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Congrats to the firefighters. Very distinct and well-deserved honor. Item number three is twenty-twenty budget tax incremental finance district presentation and TID number fourteen creation by Phil Cosson with Ayers and Associates. Good evening, Phil.
Good evening. Thank you, mayor. Nothing can chase, clear, clear out a room faster than tax increment financing discussions. So I'll wait a second here. Well, annually, we come in front of you to talk about a number of issues, where you're typically here talking about capital financing when you get through that process. This time around, similar to last year, we're here to talk a little bit about, a little education on what tax, tax incremental financing is, in light of the fact that you may be looking to create tax increment district number fourteen. So this document that I'm going to walk through with you relatively quickly gives you a kind of a overview of the program, how it works, talk a little bit about your existing tax increment districts, and then talk about the process to create tax increment district number fourteen, which will be the first new district in, in the city since two thousand and eleven. So a lot of new faces since you went through that process. And then also, I was asked to talk a little bit about rating, agency change, and process a little bit as well. So there's a number of topics I'm going to hit on. So what I first had to do is kind of have a little building block of, of how the program works, and what are the, the key issues that I have to address as I'm assisting the city in preparation of putting together a new tax increment district, and then what has to be incorporated into the actual tax increment district documentation. So the fundamental program, underpinning of the program is called the BUT-4 test. And BUT-4 is just that, BUT-4 TIF, where the project or projects occur. And you need to be able to answer that question through the, through the process, as do the other taxing bodies. The school, county, technical college, all have a vote in this as well. And so when we start talking about tax increment financing, we talk about the BUT-4 test, we're looking at a number of things. We're looking at where the development happened in the same timeframe, the same valuation, property values, jobs, and amenities, and we're looking at all of those factors when we start looking at creation of a tax increment district. But that is the key pinning, underpinning of the, of the entire tax increment program in the state of Wisconsin. So how a TIF works, when you get ready to create a district, you're going to draw a boundary. And you're going to draw a boundary around a number of parcels, and those parcels are going to be identified as a new tax increment district. Just say it's TID fourteen in this case. The value, when you create the district, is what's called the base value. Just say those ten parcels have a value of ten thousand dollars each, and you have a base value of a hundred thousand dollars. That base value, that hundred thousand dollars, and the taxes collected on that, stay with all the taxing bodies over the life of the district. So the school, county, technical college, and the city all get their share of that hundred thousand dollars. As development grows in a tax increment district, that's called increment. That's increase in tax value. That increment, just say it goes from one hundred thousand to one... we look at all of those factors when we start looking at creation of a tax increment district. But that is the key pinning, underpinning of the entire tax increment program in the State of Wisconsin. So how a TIF works, when you get ready to create a district, you're going to draw a boundary. And you're going to draw a boundary around a number of parcels, and those parcels are going to be identified as a new tax increment district. Just say it's TID 14 in this case. The value, when you create the district, is what's called the base value. Just say those 10 parcels have a value of $10,000 each, and you have a base value of $100,000. That base value, that $100,000, and the taxes collected on that stay with all the taxing bodies over the life of the district. So the school, county, technical college, and the city all get their share of that $100,000. As development grows in a tax increment district, that's called increment. That's increase in tax value. That increment, just say it goes from 100,000 to 1,000, 1,100,000, the full $1 million stays with the city, and the city retains those funds to be used for projects identified in the TID project plan. So the power of TIF is that your partners, the county, the technical college, and the school district are foregoing the new taxes on that development while the district is in place, and you retain those funds to be able to use as you identified in the project plan. So that's why they have a seat at the table, to make sure that that's all done properly. The program has a lot of different tests, a lot of analysis that has to be done. As you can imagine, a state-run program that's been modified since 1976, there's a lot of nuance to it. But one of the tests that you have to meet is the equalized value test. And what that says is you can't have more than 12% of the total value of the community located within tax increment districts and create a new one. Once you hit that 12% test, you would have the, you don't have the ability to create a new district or amend the boundaries of an existing district. Right now, the city is at about 8% of that 12% test, meaning you have a lot of capacity still to create new districts if you choose to. There's other tests as it pertains to the type of district. There's blight rehab districts. You have to meet a test that at least 50% of the area and the boundaries meet that test. If it's an industrial district, like you're talking about for Tax Increment 14, you need to demonstrate and, and retain that at least 50% of the area is going to be suitable for industrial purposes for the life of the district. There's also other tests, a mixed-use tax increment district. There's also environmental tax increment districts. But what I'm going to focus on today is that industrial district, because that is what you're looking at for Tax Increment District Number 14. As I indicated, there's a lot of different rules and regulations that tie to, tie to these districts. A tax increment district created under the industrial statute has a maximum life of 20 years. If it's a blight rehab district, think TIDs 5 and 9, those are blight rehab districts. They can, they can last for up to 27 years. And then the mixed-use districts are also a 20-year TID. The other piece of that is you can spend money up to five years from the maximum life of the district. So if you create TID Number 14, that can stay open for a maximum of 20 years, and you can spend money in that district to be recouped from the new increment that's being generated for up to the first 15 years. After that, you can't spend any additional dollars in that tax increment district. So the key questions are what can we do and what can't we do in a tax increment district? And we put together kind of a laundry list of things that can be done. These are all eligible project costs. The typical are public works projects, water, sewer, streets, stormwater, electric, communication, all those kind of things can be paid for. Real property assembly costs, I'm going to talk a little bit about that a little bit later with TID 14. Professional services, to hire folks, engineers, if you have to hire outside staff to do serving, those kind of things, those could all be paid for. If your, if your attorney is working on a development agreement, those kind of costs can be certainly paid for. And certain administrative costs that could be tied back directly to the tax increment district. In addition to that, relocation costs, organizational costs, you can prorate costs for utility infrastructure depending on, as long as you can demonstrate that the tax increment district needs that. Cash grants, incentives to developers, to businesses are an option as well. Environmental remediation, and then projects located within a half-mile of the boundary of the district at any point that, again, you can identify, have a contributing benefit to the new tax increment district. So there are some criteria around that as well. So that's a long list of what you can do in tax increment districts. Prohibited costs are a shorter list, but they're, but they are important to know. One, you cannot construct or expand administrative police, fire, community, recreational, library, school buildings. Think public buildings. You can't do public buildings with tax increment district money. Costs are constructing, expanding facilities if similar facilities are normally financed with water, with like user fees. Many times, we'll have to waive user fees or kind of piggyback on those if we're going to use tax increment district. General operating expenses that are not tied directly to that tax increment district are not allowed to be charged against the tax increment district. And then costs associated with newly-platted residential, unless it's in a mixed-use district, and in some cases is in a blight or rehab district as well. So in your industrial district, TID 14, if that proceeds and things don't go well, you can't just rezone the land and say we're going to do residential. Not saying you're planning to do that, but that would not be an allowed expenditure and development within that, within that industrial district. So it's very specific. You can only do newly-platted residential, again, in a mixed-use district, and in some cases, environmental. There is flexibility with the program. You can do amendments. You can do up to four property boundary amendments, and you can certainly do as many amendments as you want, understanding that there's time and costing going through each one of those. But there is a substantial amount of flexibility. So if, for instance, you draw the boundaries for TID 14 and you decide, oops, we should have picked up at a later date, you certainly can pick up another parcel or parcels if you want to expand that tax increment district. So there is quite a bit of flexibility as it pertains to the use of the program. So I showed this last year as well, frequently-asked TIF questions. One, is TIF a tax break? Well, that's one of the big misnomers in the state, and there's a lot of people, I think they know a lot about tax increment financing, but then all little snippets, and then they pick up the paper and read a few other things. But it's not a tax break. What it is, is a property that's located within the TIF district and outside pay the same property tax, exactly the same. They come to the city, they pay the tax bill. Nothing is different except for, once the money is collected, how it gets distributed. That's the difference. The city retains the increment, the base goes to all the taxing bodies, as I talked about earlier. Is TIF only for blood elimination? No, that's one of the historically incorrect statements that we hear all the time. We hear, it was, it was created explicitly for blight elimination. In reality, in 1976, there was an allowance for industrial, green site industrial development as well. It's just the majority of the first districts that were created were for blight elimination. Other questions, does the TID change the zoning for the property? It certainly can be changed, but it doesn't necessarily have to change it. Now, think about TID 14, if you're getting, if you proceed with that, you're going to have to make sure that land is zoned and suitable for industrial. But down the road, you certainly could change some of the zoning from industrial to maybe like commercial or like, you know, some other business park-type zoning. So there can be some change, but residential is where we run into those problems. And finally, does it, TID make it easier for municipality to use eminent domain? That's certainly not the case. The state statute for eminent domain is the same whether the property is in the tax increment district or not. I've had numerous, numerous, numerous meetings over my long tenure doing this, where people said, well, this is the precursor too. And I could point to every one of those that said that never happened. So eminent domain just doesn't come on the heels of a tax increment district. So if you're the city, why would you actually offer incentives? Why would you go through that process? Well, you know, communities need to grow to be able to be, to be sustained. If you think about levy limits, and under levy limits, every municipality has the ability to increase their budget, but only by net new construction. Well, that's, in most communities, a very, very small number, 1% to 2%, if you're lucky. Sometimes, if you're a bigger community, less than that. So growth allows you to, to actually increase your levy to take on additional, additional projects, or take on, the ability to take on other initiatives that the city council may choose for, for your city staff. You know, communities want to enhance property values. If you think about TIDs 5 and 9 and the growth that's occurred in the downtown, it's certainly, and some of the other districts as well, it has enhanced the city versus what was there previously. You provide incentives because, quite frankly, developers want to make profits. And there's a gap in many, many cases when you start talking development, and that gap is many times what TIF is used for. You provide incentive to close that gap, to entice a developer to, or a company to proceed with a project. So profit's not a bad thing. It's just making sure that what's being, what's being provided to them is justifiable, and that you vetted that as well. You know, the BUT4 clause, is there a gap that needs to be filled? I talked about that. And then finally, you know, as I always say, you have to do your due diligence as you go through and provide any type of incentive, and I'll talk about that a little more coming up. So what is an incentive provided? Well, community becomes an equity partner many times upfront. You're going to be an equity partner to some extent right away, because you're going to be, you know, initiating this project potentially in TID 14. In others, you could have a company ready to move into a community, and they say, you know, we need you to create a tax increment district. We need X number of dollars to make this happen. Help us. You're really a partner in that development. The trend over the last 10 years or so is to try to push as much to what's called pay-as-you-go. So instead of the city going ahead and borrowing all the money for a company or providing them a direct incentive, rather, you have an agreement that runs between the community and a developer, or a community and a company, that says, we will reimburse back to you some of the increment that you generate. What that does is it shifts the risk to the developer or the business, that if they don't perform or don't expand, there's nothing for this, no obligation that the city has to make any payment to them. That's been a big shift over the last number of years. Conclusion of a project, again, developer-financed projects is the nice thing about the pay-go, where, you know, again, they're financing it, and you're reimbursing them over time. So the question with any development is who takes the risk, who's sharing the risk, and then how do you, if you're a city, how do you mitigate the risk as much as possible in that project? So using TIF appropriately, TIF is not without its risk, and we all, everything's got risk. It's only effective if the development occurs. So obviously, if you can use that pay-as-you-go approach, where there's this incentive directly to them coming out of their development, that shifts a lot of the risk. If you think about projects that are typically financed, and I, I point to Paradise Drive and a few others, those areas, I've been around long enough to know when I used to come into town on Paradise, what it looked like versus now. They're distinctly different. There was a lot of growth that occurred on Paradise Drive, and a lot of that growth was fueled by the public imperments in that area. The enhancement of the imperments in that area fostered a lot of that development. That came through the tax increment district. So there has been a lot of projects that were financed, capital projects financed, that otherwise, if they weren't paid by TID, were going to come from the general levy. They were going to come from the water and sewer users, and they'd be paid for that way. So the TIF tool certainly allows you to pay for some of those project costs with another source of funds that's not directly in the tax rolls. Again, TIF is a partnership, I always want to point out. It's really a partnership with your other taxing bodies. Washington County, you've been very fortunate. You've had great support from the county. The West Ben School Districts have provided great support. Moraine Park has been a good partner as well. All three of those taxing bodies have allowed you the flexibility to use this program, and the flexibility over a long time to, to make sure that when you put these tools, TIF is a tool, in place, to allow it to work its way out as well. So you've had good partnerships with the other taxing bodies. This is a very tiny map showing your tax increment districts. Mark has a much bigger one, I'm sure. But you have tax increment districts that are scattered about the city. Sad to say that I could tell you which every one of those colors are, which district. But in my terms, they're probably not the official city terms of what they are. This is the list of active tax increment districts, and my term for them, that are out there. I mean, you have everything from business parks in TID 3 and 4, to mixed-use developments with river shores, blight elimination-type projects with 5 and 9, the Gale Company redevelopment area. I mean, you have a lot that has been tackled using this tool. Has it worked perfectly? I think it was working well until the downturn in 2007 and '08. Things got a little hairy for a while, but the good news is you're in a pretty healthy position. I'll talk about that in more detail. And I think a lot of these districts will start being able to reimburse back some of the, the advances that were, that were taken out to support those. So this is another chart that's a little bit hard to read, but if you look at the column on the right, and for those who have been around for a while, they've heard me preach about this over a number of years. If you look at the column on the right, and quite frankly, it's going to be hard for me to read also, just one second. If you look at the column on the right, what that's demonstrating is the amount of debt service, principal and interest on an annual basis that's attributed to your tax increment districts. And it's a substantial amount. You've had a lot of investment in your tax increment district. But why I want to show it to you is that the total principal and interest in 2018 was about 5.6 million, dropped to 5.2 million in 2019, and in 2020, it's going to drop from 5.2 million to 4.1 million. That's a 1.1 million drop in your debt service payments, at the same time that your tax increment districts are generating revenue. They're more mature districts. So there's a, there's a crossover occurring between 2019 and 2020. This assumes you take out no additional tax increment debt. Then it's due to drop down to about 3.7 million, and you can see from that point on, it drops off. Now, this is looking at with no new addition, no additional debt being taken on. But this is partly why the tax increment districts are getting healthy, the debt service is dropping off, and as a result of that, we have a situation where each of the districts is becoming a little more viable financially. Give me one second here. At work, I'm not known as a technology guy, so.
While you're digging, Phil.
There we go.
That, that almost million-dollar drop that we're about to see, I think that is what will allow us to begin paying back some of the utilities and some of the other entities at the city that funded those dollars. So as that debt continues to, to be reduced, and we continue to generate increment, we can then pay back sewer utility, water utility, I don't know if there's any others, but.
Just some general fund also.
Got it.
So that's the next slide, Mayor. Thank you. I looked at, so, quick snapshot without going into a lot of detail in each of the districts. You know, existing TID cash flows with the following exceptions are in good shape. Now, TID Number 3, Wingate, is really pretty close to closing out. We're going to be a couple of years from closing that district out. There are, there have historically been shortfall payments. There is an agreement with the developers out there that shortfall payments are made by the developers. So it really has not created any kind of needed levy support or advances in TID 3. Those shortfalls have been picked up by the developers. So the same with TID Number 10, where there's a development agreement where the developers have, have picked up the shortfall payments over the years. So those have not had any impact on, on fund balance or, or the levy. TID 5 and TID 9, I'll talk about next, those have had shortfalls over the years. There's been advances, as the mayor indicated, from both the water and sewer utility and some money from the general fund over a number of years. We are now at a point where TIDs 4 and 6, which we have a revenue-sharing agreement, the money can more than cover the shortfall payments for 5 and 9, and generate enough money where there's, there's the ability to start paying back those advances, as the mayor has indicated. So I've kind of turned the corner on 5 and 9 with the help of tax increment districts 4 and 6 surpluses. There's a modest shortfall payment in TID 7 as well. I'm not going to get into the history of that, but I want to, but I'm not going to. But there's a modest amount of shortfall payment in TID 7 as well. But all in all, that 1.1 million dollar drop is really effectively going to allow the city, over the number of years now, start to be able to reimburse back the water, sewer utility, and the general fund. So let's talk a little about tax increment. been advances, as the mayor indicated, from both the water and sewer utility and some money from the general fund over a number of years. We are now at a point where TIDS 4 and 6, which we have a revenue-sharing agreement, the money can more than cover the shortfall payments for 5 and 9 and generate enough money where there's, the ability to start paying back those advances, as the mayor has indicated. So we've kind of turned the corner on 5 and 9 with the help of tax increment districts 4 and 6 surpluses. There's a modest shortfall payment in TID 7 as well. I'm not going to get into the history of that, but I want to, but I'm not going to. But there's a modest amount of shortfall payment in TID 7 as well. But all in all, that 1.1 million dollar drop is really effectively going to allow the city, over the number of years now, start to be able to reimburse back the water, sewer utility, and the general fund. So let's talk a little about tax increment district number 14, and as I indicated, this will be the first new district since 2011. It's been a relatively long time for a community this size. It would be an industrial tax increment district. It would be a 2020 district. And why it would be 2020 is we would create the district after September 30th of this year. Any date after that will become a 2020 base value year. Why that's important is we don't want to burn up one year, this year, of potential development, that 20-year window starts. So we want it to be 2020. It'd be a new industrial park, as you know. Minimum of 50% of the TID needs to be suitable for industrial purposes, as I indicated earlier. The maximum life would be 20 years, expenditure period 15 years, and it cannot be a recipient district. So it's going to have to stand on its own as a tax increment district and not be able to receive funds from other districts at a later date. So options to mitigate risk, there's a couple of things that I've identified here. The first is, there's been discussion about land acquisition and when you would time that if you do it. There's a couple of options. One, if you need to or would purchase property prior to the creation of the district, you have the ability to recoup what's called the, the land write-down portion out of, out of tax increment districts still. And what that is, is just say you bought the property for $100 and you sold it for 10, that $90 difference can be recouped out of the tax increment districts, the difference between the two. Otherwise, you could wait, purchase the land after the district has been created. But in either case, you'd have the ability to recoup the vast majority of that land Obviously, phasing infrastructure costs to meet just the initial demand in that area would be a way to mitigate risk. If you provide any incentives, I would recommend you do it on a pay-as-you-go basis, as I talked about earlier, and then provide any kind of guarantees as, when appropriate, for many companies or developers along the way. So that'd be TID 14. There is a process to go through, and I know, again, a lot of new faces. So I put down the statutory process to create a tax increment district. So actually, Plan Commission is the one that kind of shepherds the process, and they're the one who holds a public hearing. So Plan Commission actually prepares the project plan, and then convene a joint review board. The joint review board is the school, county, technical colleges, city, and then a citizen member. Those five members become the joint review board. The public hearing is held by the Plan Commission. After Plan Commission has reviewed it, if there are any changes to be made, they can be made still after the public hearing. They would adopt the resolution forwarding on to the, to the city council. The council would act roughly two to four months, or two to four weeks after that. It would forward on, if it's approved by council, to the joint review board for final action by them. And if they approve it, then it gets filed to the State Department of Revenue for certification. So typically, it will take about a 90, it's about a 90-day window to get through the process to the filing. You can do it probably as short as about 75 days to get through the process. So I think if you want to work your way backwards, think 75, 90 days to kind of get through that process. So that would be the, the process to create the tax increment district. Obviously, you have staff that's been through this process before. The mayor's certainly been through it. City administrator's been through the process as well, so it's not foreign to them, but it, it does take a little bit of time to get through that. Any questions on TID 14?
You had made mention of the fact that the boundaries of the TIF can be expanded as time goes on, you have another property you want to add to it. Is there a requirement that that property be contiguous, contiguous, or could it exist on the other side of the city?
Yeah, I didn't mention that, but all properties have to be contiguous. So it's, it's one of the requirements of the tax increment law to make sure that we're not, you know, picking up a parcel here and there, but they, all the parcels have to be contiguous. They have to be whole parcels, and they all have to be located within the city boundaries.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Phil? Jay, when do we expect to be at Plan Commission? So the, the process has to start after September 30th?
No, no, it's just the council action would have to be after the September 30th deadline to be a 2020 district.
There's an agenda item tomorrow for this.
And that's kicking off this process?
Yep, not for the project plan, but for the first step of it, just like we did with the Schmidt Land, for the Renner Land tomorrow.
So Phil, you'll be hanging around the next 90 days or so?
God willing.
Good. Any other questions? Otherwise, do you have, finished up with another slide, or are you?
I have another slide that was asked, that I was asked to put in this afternoon, so one other question, hopefully this, this may spur some more discussion, but as you know, there was a frustration with your last rating report. The city had worked with Moody's Investor Service for an extended time, 20-plus years at least. You have a current rating with Moody's. The question was, what's the options? One, how do you make the determination? Two, and then three, what's the process if you want to make a switch? So I think, one, we could help you with all of this, obviously, but one, probably review the firms. You're well aware of who Moody's is. S&amp;P is the other big player in the state. They probably, they've picked up a number of accounts over, a number of communities over the last couple of years. We work with them weekly, just like Moody's. They have a little different process, a little longer lead time. We know all the analysts there well. Fitch is the, the third that participates in Wisconsin, but Fitch's market share is negligible, but they do have a couple of large credits, Dane County and Kenosha County, a lot of, couple of counties in the state. For a community your size, my recommendation, if you want to move off of Moody's, would be S&amp;P because this is a typical rating for them, where Fitch, this is probably outside of their norm. So it would probably be Fitch. But also, I think, understanding the benchmarks used by each of the firms is important. We have those benchmarks as a comparison, you can take a look at. Each firm kind of has their niche a little bit of, of what they've, they all view fund balance, and they all view growth, and they all have these, these criteria that are very similar, but they weight, weight them a little bit different. And so, understanding those benchmarks used by each of the firms, I think, is important. Again, we have, we have benchmarks, we can show you from each of those firms, and where how they weight the importance of certain issues. So you have a couple of options if you want to make the switch. One is you could proceed with one firm or request kind of an initial, which is a non-public initial rating. It's kind of a peek under the tent, if you will, that you can kind of get a view from them where they think they would come in with a rating. There's a cost to do that, but it kind of gives you an idea of, of where they think they would be, and it gives you a little bit more visibility in kind of what the ultimate rating would be. So that's an option, or you could just go down the path of making a change and going with somebody. If a switch is made, I think you need, you will need a little longer lead time. I mean, typically, if you think about a rating, what we end up doing is, we come to you, we author, have you authorized the sale, we start sending stuff to Moody's, and 30 days later, you have a rating. S&amp;P's window is a little bit longer than 30 days, it tends to be closer to 60 days, 45 to 60 days. So there's a little more pre-planning needed, working with them. I would say also that your annual borrowing has typically been March, April, you know, in that timeframe. We've always tried to wait until the audit came out, so at least we had some, some better numbers to provide to them. If you made a switch, we would want to make sure on your annual borrowing at least, that we had fresh numbers from an audit. So if you make the switch and, and you switch to one of the other firms, then you may, it may delay your first annual borrowing by a month or two. So maybe instead of March, April, you may be looking at April, May for that capital borrowing. But it's just because you need a little more lead time, and they'll have a few more questions, the first call will take longer, all those kind of things. So there's a couple of options, again, as I said, firms and process. Again, you can pick one of the firms to go, go to and/or you can request this kind of non-public initial peek-under-the-tent rating.
Phil, what's the cost for the peek under the tent? Any clue what that runs?
I'd have to get that for you, Mayor, I, I don't want to.
That would help, and then if you could also forward over, maybe Jay, maybe you've got the, the benchmarks.
Sure.
I think the council will, Mark, did we have a discussion regarding this since you've been elected? Just not feeling the love from Moody's. Five, six years ago, we had some conversations with Tatiana, is that her name?
Yeah.
And she laid out at that point in time some pretty clear directives of where we were financially and why our rating was what it was, and where we needed to go. I think we're there, and we've probably exceeded where we needed to go, and they really haven't reciprocated with a better rating. So I'm personally, I'm not saying we should switch, it sounds like there's some liability, you know, maybe S&amp;P's not quite as nimble as Moody's is. So maybe we should gather that information, understand what the benchmarks are, find out what the cost is. If this is negligible, I think it's probably worth getting a, a free look at where we think they may be. How important are we to Moody's? Do they, all right, thank you. That's what I thought.
Can't answer that for them.
Again, this is maybe.
They would say very important, but.
I, after 20 years, it's probably worth us at least exploring, taking a look regardless of the fact that they really have kind of shunned us off and thrown us in the bucket of 30,000-person communities, not in the bucket of communities that listened to them five, six, seven, eight years ago and are really putting that plan into action. So if you can forward that information, Jay, when you get it, let's put it on the council agenda for a further discussion, if that makes sense to you guys.
Will do.
Awesome. Any other questions for Phil? Good presentation. Mark?
Yeah, recently, I think it was the Village of Slinger went out for a public option or a public financing, and they were substantially below what their estimates were. Is this a better, is that a function of being a better time to go borrow money, or did they do something to drastically improve their credit standing?
Well, I work with them, so I can answer this for you, I think. Their rating did not change. They're rated a notch lower than, than the city of West Bend. And it's, that was probably more a reflection of good timing.
I don't know that we've seen a negative ramification to our rates, you know, the refinancing that we've done through Moody's has been great. It's, it's maybe, I don't want to use the word ego, but we've worked our tails off to get into a stronger financial position. It'd be nice if the experts were at least recognizing that, I guess is the case. So, good. Anybody else? Thanks, Phil.
All right, thank you.
We'll see you soon. Good work. Richard, do you have anything? Just tell them not to joke. Okay, moving along to item number four is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the common council from July 15th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Are you none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Items 5 through 14 are under the consent agenda, we can take those at one time.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Under agenda items for consideration, item 15, transfer of ownership, 1311 North 12th Avenue. Presentation and discussion by city attorney Ian Post.
So you'll see in the memorandum printed out, a report from the building inspection department. This is a property where there's some foundation issues resulting from subsuel conditions. The current property owner has moved out of the property, she's in, I believe, assisted living. Rather than issue a raise order and go through the process, we, the building inspection and planning department approached the owner's family and discussed the situation with them. They have opted, instead of going through the raise order process, to essentially just, in lieu of that, sign the property over to the city, which would be a likely outcome of us raising, raising the buildings, assessing it against the property, and then, you know, taking it through a tax deed or a judgment process. So this is on the agenda, or on the, on the agenda, not as a formal agreement at this stage, but just to advise council and to get essentially your approval to enter into an agreement. There's really nothing we have to do other than accepting a quitclaim deed for the property. I will draw up an agreement, just laying out the reasons for this so that it's clear it's not a donation, that this is in lieu of a judgment, just so that the current owner doesn't have issues with Medicaid or anything like that. So any questions I can answer? Otherwise, we're just looking for approval to move forward with the transfer of ownership.
Motion to approve transfer of ownership.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. I've got a quick question. So the city will have ownership or get ownership, and then can we sell it as-is to someone who is under the understanding that they're raising it and starting over, or we demo it and then sell it for the, at least the cost of what it, what the investment to raise it was? So we can do what we want with it if there's some local rehab guy or something, then, okay, got it.
So, so either one would work. We could raise it and just recoup our money by selling the lot, or enter into some type of transfer agreement where the person agrees to either bring it up to code or raise it within a certain number of days.
The point is here, it's a hazard, they don't have the wherewithal to do anything with it, they're giving it to us so we don't put something on their tax.
I, I believe this came to building inspections' attention because somebody saw into the basement from the street.
That's pretty bad, my understanding is. Okay. Anybody else? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 16, operator's license for Mallory Wolf. Is Ms. Wolf here, Ms. Wolf here by chance? Nope.
Motion to, motion to deny.
Second. Ian?
So just want to clarify the motion, we haven't done one of these for a while. Motion should be motion to deny and adopt the chief's, chief's recommendation as findings.
Motion has been made and seconded. With that note, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item 17, annexing Town of Trenton territory, a 155.7 acre parcel of land located on River Road near the northeast quadrant of Highway NN and River Road, the Renner Lands. And we have presentation tonight by business and development specialist Jim Ranky. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're requesting, or asking the council to review and consider the annexation for 155 acres located at the northeast corner of River Road and County Shrunken Highway NN. The Plan Commission reviewed the request from the property owners back in July 9th of 2019, and recommended approval to the council. Along with that, they are also recommending a temporary zoning of the M2 heavy industrial as a part of the annexation. The annexation has been reviewed by the Department of Administration and has been deemed to be in the interest of the public, so staff would recommend approval of the annexation.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim?
The levying taxes are, is the city responsible for those or the property owner?
It's typically collected either through the property owner or by agreement. In this case, it hasn't been determined exactly if it's going to be the property owner or the purchaser. But that, that $502 is actually for five years, so the, the amount being appropriated every year is about $100.
Motion to approve. Second. Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 14, excuse me, item 18, preliminary resolution to vacate River Bend Drive and a portion of River Shores Drive by the City of West Bend Department of Development, and again, a presentation by Jim.
Thank you. The developers up in the River Shore Development had approached the city asking or requesting to vacate the remaining portion of River Bend Drive and then also a portion of River Shores Drive. The street vacation is the first step to help with the redevelopment of the area. The vacation is consistent with the master plan that was approved by the Plan Commission and also by the common council. So this is the first step of. So this is the first step of the vacation process where we approve a preliminary resolution or a preliminary, yeah, resolution for the vacation. And then as a part of this, the council would have set the public hearing for September 23 at 6:30 to finish the, do a final approval of that resolution to officially vacate that property in order for the developer to redevelop portions of that for parking lot expansion.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions for Jim? They could use some parking up there, by the way. This'll be good.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number 19 is tabled until next meeting, and we'll jump ahead to item number 20, purchase agreement with New Perspectives to purchase land in the south half of, south half of the parcel, TIF number 12. And Ian, you want to talk through this?
So I had a conversation this afternoon with one of the representatives from New Perspectives. They are intending to come to the next meeting to do a presentation in closed session of item 19 that we tabled till next meeting. So today, we're just looking for a motion to informally extend the letter of intent to next meeting to wait for that presentation before making any decisions one way or the other to move forward and not still move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And under reports, item 21, a report by Alderman Hugaster regarding the Park and Recreation Commission meeting.
Sadly, I wasn't able to really be there for a whole lot of it because they changed the time on me. But a couple of things that came out of it, obviously, we all know that Craig Hepburn resigned, and we said goodbye to him. The interim Park and Rec Director is Jay. He's going to be filling that role until we decide which way we're going to go with the current position. I'm just looking through the minutes here. Couple of donations received, River Shores Chiropractic, RegoWare Worldwide, West Bend Friends of Park, I'm sorry, those two, first two were for the West Bend Dirty Ninja Mud Run, West Bend Friends of Park and Rec for Lunches for Kids, West Bend Stone and Gravel, they filled the sand for the mud pit, and West Bend Disc Golf Club for Riverside Disc Golf Course. But other than that, that's really all I was there for, and like I said, we said goodbye to Craig, wished him well, and sorry to see him leave, but it is what it is.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Alderman Hugaster? And be no further business before the common council adjourn. Are there any announcements tonight? And good night, have a great evening, everyone.